The airport continues to have helicopters that don't bother to use the voluntary noise abatement program and continually fly over the neighborhood. And how do we use this to deal with that situation?
Good question. Any answer, Frisco? I guess the question is why Buckland? Why not someplace nearer to our own airport?
I'd be happy to answer that one. Originally, Councilmember Grocott asked that we try another pumping station that was behind his previous location. And we did that as a temporary test bed to see if it would work out, maybe for possible going towards a permanent site. Wasn't quite enough room. We were informed at the other site, it was just over the fence, literally. And so we went ahead and tried that one out. It worked out rather well. Originally, it was to monitor the SFO traffic, not San Carlos. San Carlos traffic's sort of ancillary part of this that we're picking up. And like I said, we're monitoring all aircraft, so we're not being close-minded about this. If we were asked by the airport director, Mark Larson, at San Carlos Airport to do some additional monitoring, we're more than happy to help out. So I'm sure we could probably arrange something like that. But for right now, it's primarily for the commercial traffic that we're trying to capture.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next on our agenda is a proclamation to Neil Landy. Neil has completed his Eagle Scout requirements, and he has been awarded the highest award in scouting. So Neil, will you join me at the podium, please? You know, it's one of our great pleasures to be able to recognize our young men as they go through this process and complete the requirements for the Eagle Scout Award. And let's say going into this, I was never a scout, so I have no idea what they've gone through. But I look at all their badges, and I hear about the projects, and I realize he always invested. And I gotta admit, you know, this is one big deal. I'm sure all scouts going in are going to get to this level someday, but probably a fairly limited number finally do. And Neil, we appreciate everything you've done, and honor you with a proclamation from the city for the good work that you've invested with the scouting program. This is the highest award in scouting. It's something that, as I say, is desired by many and achieved by few. And you're to be acknowledged and recognized for the good work you've done. And so on behalf of the city of San Carlos, congratulations, and thank you very much for your good work. Now, as a part of your growing away on this process, you need to talk to us a little bit about anything you'd like to talk to us about. But we would like to hear about your project. So take a few minutes and bring us up to date.
Well, my project was at Sequoia High School where I graduated in 2007. And what I did, I did a lot of mostly preparation for the project, but the main project itself is I took two areas of the Sequoia Tea Garden, which needed a lot of fixing up. It just didn't, it looked out of place, basically. And I had the idea so I could come back, you know, 50 years later or some odd, and notice that I actually did something to improve my school. That gave so much to me. So what I did is I planted about over 1,000 vinca plants in two large areas of the tea garden. And I went back there about a month ago, and it looks pretty good. A few weeds are growing out, but pretty much the vinca's taken over, so it's starting to really look good. And for the path to Eagle Scout, there's a lot. I mean, there's different badges, different raking, tender first class, second class, you know, goes on and on. All of these are badges, so you have to do special requirements to earn a certain badge. Requirements can be so much as hiking by yourself. The arrow of light shows that I was able to basically stand by myself in the wilderness. We got dropped off far apart, and we basically had to sleep. And it kinda wasn't as much fun as I thought it'd be because it was raining, and they didn't give us tents. So we had a sleeping bag and a tarp to work with. And it was kinda on a slope, so do the, you know, it doesn't work out too well. So that's about it.
Thank you very much. And proclamation.
And thank you very much to Neil's father-in-law for their encouragement, and to our leaders behind them for their work. They produce, I don't know how many Eagle Scouts this year, but we've had a bunch of them. About 10? Well, how's the next crop? Are they diminishing, or are they still coming on?
Four.
All right, there you go. Well, thank you very much. And thank you, Neil. And we'll take a moment to reflect on our agenda. Would anyone like to make a change to the order of the agenda? Looks good. We'll carry on. Number five, council communications and announcements. If anything happened to anyone's life, that's the last meeting.
I have a couple things, Mr. Mayor. One is when we were down in Pass Christian, which I told the council about back after that trip, we noticed, staying at Randy's camp, Randy's Rangers, that there are a number of signs outside the camp. It kinda looks like when you drive into a town, and they have the rotary signs and the lions and so forth up on the posts, only these are, these are signs from different cities or organizations that have come in and helped out. And we all noticed that, and we noticed that they didn't have anything there. So talked to Mr. Weiss about it, Parks and Rec, and he was nice enough to see to it that we have this sign made. And we'll be taking, either taking this down or sending it down, somehow getting it down to Pass Christian to put at Randy's camp. And I'm sure when Randy's camp is over and done with, the city of Pass Christian will probably want to keep this nice sign someplace. So we'll be giving this as a gift, if you will, to the city.
Very good. Good. Thank you.
And the only other thing I wanted to mention, it's a little early for this maybe, but I did take a drive down Eucalyptus Avenue the other day. I noticed the people out there with their lifts, getting ready for the holidays, and putting up their lights and so forth. So we can all look forward to going down Eucalyptus Avenue soon and having a good time down there.
Very good. Bob?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor, except to wish everyone, as I'm sure all of us do, we had a happy Thanksgiving and looking forward to an interesting holiday season. I hope we all have the spirit in us, and not only economic, but a little bit of spiritual in there, too. So that's all I really had tonight.
Thank you. And Brad?
I'll just say, as a temporary resident of Eucalyptus Avenue, please, if you come down, drive slow, don't park in front of the driveways, be pleasant, and yeah, make sure there's plenty of parking for the local residents.
And you're gonna have treats for everyone who wanders by? Is that part of the deal?
I guess it's a temporary resident.
And I'll just say that, you know, those of you who follow this action up here, expected at one time this would be our reorganization meeting. And because of a few closed contests around the county, the board of supervisors won't get to certify the ballot until tomorrow. And tonight's tonight, and therefore, we aren't able to install our newest members, Randy Royce and Neil Landy. We look forward to doing that at the meeting of December 10, as well as choosing a new mayor, vice mayor, having some speeches, and having every freshman's anniversary reception afterwards at the Adal Commandee Center. So you're all welcome. And those of you who are looking in from the outside are also welcome. So we hope we have a nice turnout, and people have a chance to share with us. And I, yes, Matt?
Just a guaranteed no change up here on the dais is our very capable city clerk down here, Christine Bowlin.
Do you know why she got all the votes, your city clerk?
I noticed that.
That's amazing. Okay. Let's see. We're moving on to approval of the consent calendar, which will be, which items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Anything to be removed by the council staff, public? Then we'll take a vote on the consent calendar. A motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve items 6, A, B, C, D, and E on the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brusili?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiggleroy is absent. Mayor Davis?
Yes. Number seven, reports to council. These are updates on key city projects by department heads and staff, and city council subcommittees. Our first one is the Burton Park conceptual playground design plans and fundraising update. Barry Weiss.
Mayor Davis and members of the city council, it's my pleasure to be up here tonight and update you on two exciting projects. They're both long projects, so I thought it only appropriate to update the city council at some point. And they're exciting because both of them involve a lot of community input. And that makes it very exciting for all of us. First, I'm going to give you an update on the Burton Park Playground renovation project. As you know, it's desperately in need of renovation. And we've had to remove a few pieces already, and we're looking to build a brand-new playground for the school-aged children, a separate playground to replace the toddler playground, and also install a water spray feature. We will be what we believe to be the first truly inclusive playground in the county of Samatay. Truly inclusive means that disabled children will be able to get to at least 70% of the features. And as always, we like being on the cutting edge when it comes to serving our customers even better. I mentioned considerable public input. We sent out letters to the immediate neighbors. We held community meetings to help take design ideas in. We posted signs at the park. We sent letters and emails to local preschools, 700-plus people. We did an online survey and had over 500 people respond to that, giving us input for the design. We continue to publicize the effort in the spring, summer, and fall Parking Recreation Activity Guides this year. The electronic notification system, we are part of that, so people can stay in touch and get information. Survey results are posted on the city's website. The community input meetings, significant attendance occurred, including children, so we've got input from both adults and children on what the playground design should be. We sent letters out to all the local preschools encouraging their participation in those community meetings. And eventually, all of this input was given to the design firm so they could start the design. We are currently at 50% construction documents and working toward 95% construction documents. One of the reasons this project has been a success is a dedicated group of volunteers that have been at it for several years. And I see one of them in the audience, she's probably smiling, she's thinking, yes, it's just been a while. And you see all the people listed here in your report. They have done a lot. They started the process of getting community support, helped get the word out to get design input. They began the fundraising effort. Some of you may remember the Boondoggle Scavenger Hunt that occurred last year. That was to raise money for the new playground. They came up with the idea of children's handprint tiles. You can purchase a handprint tile for $200 and have that go on the new playground. That also serves as part of the public art component. They enlisted local businesses, community organizations, preschools, and individuals to help fund this project. They formed a separate subcommittee to help with promotions, and they provided additional leadership in grant writing. They also, one of their members volunteered to create a webpage for this project. That webpage has since evolved into the webpage for the New Parks and Recreation Foundation, but that was all the work of one volunteer. but that was all the work of one volunteer, and she, to this day, remains the webmaster for that site. I'm gonna give you an example, give you some examples of the process we've gone through for the naming, and give you a total summary of the money where we are today. First of all, this is the playground renovation I was talking about. These are the existing sites. We stayed within the existing footprints. This right here is the concert area. This is Aurora Avenue, and this is Chestnut Street, just sort of being set there bearings. This is the school-age area. This is the current water fountain, and this is the toddler area. And as you know, the toddler area currently has a fence around it. We will be adding a fence to the school-age area. And that was really twofold. One is at the request of the parents, and two, because we are serving disabled children as well, autistic kids tend to wander, and so the fence will help parents keep an eye on their children there. Part of the things that we do to make it inclusive is to try and get the children to different components of the playground features. So if you enter into the school-age area, you see the play structure here. You enter here, and you follow it around, and then it comes up here on a hill. This hill will be built up, and onto a ramp, and then onto the playground feature. And the interesting thing about this is, not only do the disabled children enjoy being up there, but as it turns out, the other children enjoy it as much or more because now they can be with their friends, as opposed to being up top of a piece of structure and their friends are down below. Also, we heard from the parents quite clearly, they wanted shade, they wanted water, they wanted swings. We have swings here. Here is a sand-and-water play area. And as you can see, we have lots of trees that we're planting here, fourteen of them. But for the first ten years, those trees aren't gonna be tall enough to provide all the shade that parents want. So we will have shade structures built onto the playground equipment. I'll give you a detailed picture of that in a minute. Over here in the toddler area, same thing. Right in here is a little sand-and-water area. We've got boulders the kids can climb on and use as a secret pathway, and we've got the play equipment and the swings. And then where the current water fountain is, the fountain will be moved from the middle to just right out to the edge, and there will be water spray features, four flush-mounted sprays that shoot water up in the air. And the little children love that. So there's your basic design, and like I said, we're in the process of doing construction documents currently. Some of the details, this is typical of the play structure that we're looking at with the shade structure. And what I'm showing you here, too, is the naming opportunity and what it would cost for an individual or a business to have their name put on a specific feature. And I should note right up front that, after you see the whole list of what's available for naming, and then I'm gonna show you what has been named already, we can negotiate with people if they say to us, gee, I don't have a hundred and fifty, but you know, I'd like to do something, you know, how about a piece of it? We can certainly talk about that, too. So this is the equipment, and you see right in here is the ramp coming off that hillside that gets everybody up to it. One of the features that we will always have from now on if we renovate playgrounds is this poured-in-place rubber. It's the safest because it provides, it needs the least maintenance. Sand is safe, but it always gets kicked loose, and then if staff's not there to refill it, you know, does it become a problem? This does not. It also is much more accessible. You can't get a wheelchair through sand or even the current fiber, engineered wood fiber that we use. By code, it's deemed accessible. Personally, I think a wheelchair or somebody on crutches have a tough time getting through it. So everything will be poured-in-place rubber. And you see again here another naming opportunity. And should be noted, as it says on the slide, the actual design is to be determined, the color and everything. There's the water spray feature, and the children love it. They get on, they go in, they get wet. It'll be computer-controlled, it'll only be on during the days when it should be on. People won't be able to turn it on by themselves. So there's that. Playhouses, and again, actual design to be determined. The naming opportunity is thirty-five thousand each for these. One of these is gonna be changed to do a pass-through. Children love to play. You know, they're making cookies for each other and passing it through a playing store or whatever. This is a typical sand-and-water play. We have one at Highlands Park currently and at Hillcrest Circle Park. And it's not very complicated. It's a pile of sand and a water faucet, and the children love it. Also, boulders. These boulders do a couple of things. They give children something to climb on, climb on safely. Also, if you remember back in the design, the toddler area, I mentioned a secret pathway. We have boulders lined up, one after the other, and when you're, this guy's size and that boulder's size, that becomes a secret pathway, as he winds his way in among the boulders. But for mom or dad or grandma and grandpa watching, they can see, and everybody's perfectly safe. The swings, it's just a typical swing set. These are the toddler swings with the bucket seats. We also will have a swing in there, it's called a body-form swing, for disabled children who may not be able to sit up completely, so that they're safe and they can have the same experience as their friends. A drinking fountain, a new one will be put in, and we will include a little doggy water area here. And this door here will be locked, it won't be open to the public, but it will be open to maintenance for the area. These are the picnic tables. You notice one definitely is smaller. We have a toddler picnic area, and then we've got, you know, a couple full-size picnic tables, too. And this is our new standard of benches for this project, and the main plate will go up here, and it's a beautiful bench. We have some of them out here in City Hall Park and down by Laurel Street Park, and we've received good reviews on these. Trash receptacles, also. Now, here's, here are the things, this is a funding update. What I've given you so far is the design and some of the specific features. And you see here, this is the funding we've got commitments for so far, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, fifty dollars. And these people will have their names on these particular items. One of them, as noted here, we don't release a name until we have permission to. Some people we choose to remain anonymous. Either way, we need permission before we publicize the name, so that's why that phrase there. The water spray feature has been taken. The, this company here, CW Right Construction and Peninsula Demolition, they are donating all of the demolition of the project. That will save us thirty thousand dollars plus. And then back up here, Harold Gerlstone, as you know, is the president of our Parks and Recreation Foundation. And we go down the line, you may recognize the name here from the Ratatouille event. They were generous in their contributions. There was another ten thousand they gave us also for athletic fields. And then on down the line, you see all the names have been taken. We do have, as I mentioned, several things still available for naming opportunities. Okay, how does that all play in with what we need? I mentioned earlier that we're selling handprint tiles for two-hundred dollars apiece, and if you buy more than one, the second and third one are a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And it's through Laurel Street Arts, and they help you do it, and you go down, you pick out your tile and put your child's handprint there. We sold a hundred and forty-two of them for that amount. The Boondoggle Scavenger Hunt I mentioned, one small grant. We're waiting on some others, as mentioned in the report. Various donors everywhere from five dollars up to a hundred dollars, and this is all run through Advocates for Accessible Recreation, the nonprofit group for the special needs program. And then, of course, the Parks and Rec Foundation assumed this project as their initial major fundraiser. The Mothers Club, two thousand dollars. Some online donations through the activity guide, where we much like your income tax form, allow you to check off and donate money to the project. We have another report coming, so we probably have another eight-hundred dollars coming. And one of the items that got the most play in town, the fire engine, has sold. It sold on eBay, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The lady who had the idea actually is in the audience, Regina Lewis, had her, this idea, what, last spring, Regina?
Last year.
Yeah. We were talking about, what do we do? She said, we might auction it off. And so sure enough, we did, and Pat and Mike Kramer bought it. And to show you what generous, community-oriented people they are, when I called to congratulate them and asked where they were gonna put it, they said, what we'd like to do is give it to the city to use in another park. And I thanked them, and once I explained, no, we can't do that, then she said that, well, her children have used it so far, and they look forward to using it some more. And I don't know if you saw the article in the paper, but they had a nice article in the paper, and they took advantage of it, and they took their Christmas card picture on the engine. So they're very excited about this. So there's the total for that. The city, in the budget you approved last spring, is putting in three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand. Two-ten, again, for naming opportunities. These miscellaneous things gives us a total of a little over six-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand. The estimated cost of this project is eight-hundred thousand, so we're about a hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars short. As I mentioned, people can still contribute. Naming opportunities, certainly, if you work for a company that can do a matching grant or give a grant, that's one way. The tiles, you can buy. You can make dinner. Sue Kitchen, as you know from previous updates, is donating seven percent of their revenue for each dinner through the month of December. And just pure donations. Go online, write us a check, take your money any way we can get it, and it'll go toward the, toward the playground there. So it's been a very exciting project, and we've had the good fortune of working with a lot of good community people. And as you can see, there's a lot of community involvement in this, and everybody's looking forward to it. At this point, I would be happy to take any questions.
Very good, Barry. Thank you. Any questions for Barry?
I just had one, Mr. Weiss. I noticed in the report, we're anticipating that the Parks and Rec Commission and then city council will get this early next year. Do we have a timeframe for construction?
We're hoping to break ground in April.
Okay.
Now, some of that is depending on the fundraising, but we're approaching the ninety-five percent construction documents, and then we wanna go out to bid late January or February for the, you know, construction bid. And of course, that would come to you to approve.
And the timeframe for, if it starts in April, any estimate of how long will it take?
Four to six months.
Four to six months.
Right.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. Two of them have to do with just observations of the park when we have the concert series in the summer. And I noticed right now that folks do sit along the sandstone wall, or slumpstone, I think that's called. And it looks like that'll be replaced with a fenced-in area, is that right?
We won't infringe on the concert area.
Oh.
Like I said, the two playgrounds stay within their existing footprint. This is where the water faucet is right now, and it's surrounded by a concrete apron. It'll be just about that same size. It might be slightly bigger. And there's gonna be a seating wall right here, and then right here, too. And that's where the handprint towels will go, and people could sit there, they'll actually end up with a little bit more seating.
Okay, very good. And perhaps it has nothing to do with this project, but the other observation, when we do have the concerts in the park, is sometimes the toilet area backs up. So I suppose there's, that's not part of this as far as adding to capacity in the park?
It's not.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, you've gone through the different funding opportunities. Is there a way an individual who's interested can go online and look for opportunities that are still available for funding?
Yes, they can go either to the city website, go to Parks and Recreation Burton Project, or they can go to the Parks and Recreation Foundation website, San Carlos Parks dot org. And both those sites have that information.
Of what's available?
Of what's available.
Right.
And they can also contact me, and I'll be glad to help them. I'm actually meeting with a business owner tomorrow who's interested in doing some naming and also a portion of the proceeds to go on this project. And obviously, since we haven't talked, I can't mention the name, but, so the interest continues to be there, and we have lots of opportunities for everybody.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brad?
Just a couple. On channel twenty-seven, do you have any information currently going on channel twenty-seven? It's a good month for tax donations, do you know, at the end of the year? And being a nonprofit organization, the Parks and Rec Foundation, just wondering if you're running anything on that for December?
We do, and I'm gonna review tomorrow and make sure that we've got exactly what we want.
It's a good month to advertise that. I think a lot of people maybe still haven't grasped the concept about the nonprofit organization benefiting the city park. So the other thing is, I know that you've mentioned that we're not losing any square footage of the current play area, but the fact that we're adding trees and some natural elements to it, which is fantastic visually, and it's nice to have some more natural elements in there. Are we losing any play square-footage area? You know what I mean? Right now, we've got a lot of different things happening in the park. Is it, is the net play area smaller, or?
No.
I mean, the same footprint, but you know what I'm getting at?
Oh, no, yeah.
Okay.
Because this structure will be here, this will be here, the swings, this big play structure, be some on-ground features, you know, spinning wheels or whatever. Plus, just the play value right here on this knoll, it has real play value to it, too.
Sure, yeah. I just, I know we have some knolls on the other side of it, and so I was, was there any discussion of having like a, you know, rock wall, or, you know, there's a couple of parks in the local towns that, you know, they will visit just in different activities, and some of them are, they don't just have like a singular structure like that, that, you know, one's got this kind of cool cable rope thing that goes up around a pole, and the kids can climb up that. It's a, it's a little neat cable web thing. And I know Stafford Park has got some, some different water features, not just the ones that squirt in the air, because then the big kids sit on, the little kids don't get any water. So anyway, I'm wondering, are there, besides the swing and an apparatus like that, or I, it's probably not the wrong, it's probably the wrong word, right, chief? Apparatus? Is there any, do you know, is there any rock climbing, or, you know, there's a big cement slide at one of the Parks in Palo Alto that's really wide, and all the kids get in and go down, and?
Yeah.
Have you guys looked into some alternate?
Well, we've got, this is a poor picture of it, but there's a rock climbing feature built into this play structure.
Okay.
And one of the things we've done is to try and, we'll enhance that. And then, you know, different slides and different features around there.
Because it's, I know you're pretty far along in the design process, but to the extent that, some of these other parks where there, there are places where, I mean, this is our primary, you know, downtown jewel park, and I guess I also wanna make sure that we're, that we're adding the kind of features that people are gonna wanna go out of their way to wanna go and congregate around. I guess I have a minor concern that we just have the one kind of structure that feels a little bit more, believe me, I love the process, and I know you guys are on top of this, but I just have to say, I was looking for us to push the boundaries a little bit beyond the singular structure.
Yeah. The entire playground reflects what the community told us that they really wanted. And so it does reflect that. And there are some other features on the ground and stuff. And you'll get a better picture of it when I bring the contract for, or the, you know, RFP forward.
So it's pretty much, it is what it is now. There's no, gonna be no further changes.
Pretty much, yeah. But it does reflect what we were told the parents wanted.
I understand. And visibility-wise, my final question now, one of the nice things is you can sit on the bench along the path, and if your child, you know, runs fifty yards across the hot sand, you can at least watch him, you know, a little bit, without having to stand right next to them all the time. With the, you know, the secret path and the trees and so forth, is the visibility gonna be, you know, as good as it is now? I mean, I think that's an advantage. People can go to the picnic benches and still have a, you know, know where, see where their child is, or see where other people are in relationship to their child.
Yes, we're very conscious of that. The secret pathway I mentioned in the toddler area, again, those are boulders that are probably twenty-four, twenty-eight inches high. So if you're a little one, it's likely in a secret pathway because they're all lined up, but for you and I looking, we see it very clear.
Okay. And, but for the eighteen, eight-to-ten-year-old, eight-to-eleven-year-old, is this a structure that also handles their level of fun and risk and play?
Yes, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to follow up on Brad's comments, because if I can give any push to it, I certainly would. I recently visited some former San Carlos residents, Rodney and Leah Jackson, who now live in San Diego and have children, and we went to know where their parks. They have some pretty nice stuff down there in San Diego. And one of the features at, one of the parks is exactly what you were talking about. It was a wall with the rock-climbing grabs on it, and it was one of the most popular features I noticed in the park. We were there for soccer games, and so soccer games were going on, and when kids weren't playing soccer, they were going over to the playground areas. And I noticed that climbing wall feature was pretty popular. And it was a by-itself feature, it's probably about six to eight feet tall, had little holes in it so kids could go in and out of the holes, like caves, and then also these hand grabs and toe hold features, so. I guess you're pretty far along in this, but that seems like a pretty neat apparatus.
We actually, when you said holes, it sparked my memory. I have pictures of some options for us that are more along those lines as opposed to what this looks like right here. And I can tell you that originally this project was estimated at six hundred thousand dollars, but because it really didn't serve, that six hundred thousand didn't work for really what the people wanted, we just kept pushing and pushing and it showed up to eight hundred thousand. Now it's the estimated cost, because we do keep adding things that people want, yeah.
Thank you, Barry. Pat?
Go away, my question's for you. Those picnic tables don't look very accessible, is my concern. They're one big solid piece and it didn't look like the ends were deep enough for chair use. And have you thought about the height for people who use wheelchairs? You know, a picnic table's a big solid thing, you're not going to move it around or change it when you get to the park. So, think about the comfort of people who use assistive devices when they are using those tables as well. Thanks.
Actually, that's a very good question. I'm going to follow up on that with the designer, because that's certainly the, one of the focuses of this playground, so.
All right, thank you, Pat. Gail?
I'm also questioning.
Gail goes.
Gail goes, yeah. Enclosing the entire play area for the older kids in a fence. I mean, my grandkids went there for years and I just can't see that the whole area should be fenced in. Maybe the outside to keep kids from running in the road and partly around it, but there should be free access in and out of it, rather than having it totally enclosed by a fence. I see that as a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Well, I just, I also didn't mean to quickly pass through, Barry, the fact that you have been so reactive. I mean, when we approved three hundred and sixty-five thousand, the project's certainly grown in a way that is responsive to the public, the fact that you've been looking out and sort of being the author of the Park and Rec. Foundation and getting that movement started in town, having those, that kind of donations made and everything, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work you put into allowing this to expand, because I think everybody has high expectations for it.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Anyone else?
Well, thank you, Barry, and to all the staff and those who've been involved, and especially to the public who have brought other suggestions forward over time, and of course, to the donors. This won't happen without the donors. And as you see, we have a number of opportunities available, so hopefully folks out there that are in call to give before the end of the year will keep the Park and Rec. Foundation and Burton Park Project in mind. And with that, we have a motion to accept the report. Barry has heard the suggestions, and she will do what he can with those. But we do want to receive the conceptual design for Burton Park and the funding update. So, do we move accordingly?
Do we need a motion on this?
Probably don't need it. We all can have consensus on this, all right?
All right.
By consensus, we'll receive the report, then we'll move on to the next item. Barry has this as well. This is our Parks Open Space Buildings and Other Recreational Facilities Master Plan Update.
Thank you. And thank you for your previous comments, too. Those kind of comments, please don't hesitate to think, well, geez, you know, people have worked hard at this, I'll give it to us, because that's one of the reasons we bring it forward, for observations and comments. And there's something we hadn't thought of or something we really need to look into, like, you know, Pat mentioned, the picnic benches. I'm pretty sure that we are addressing that, but I want to make sure, so. Comments are good, thank you. This is the other project that we're very excited about. It's the Parks Master Plan. It has a much longer name, Parks Open Space Buildings and Other Recreational Facilities Master Plan. For the sake of brevity, because we all like to get home before midnight, we will call it the Parks Master Plan. And it is the first one ever for the city of San Carlos. So we're excited about that. And again, tremendous community involvement. We've had public meetings, public workshops, public intercept events, focus groups, individual interviews with stakeholders, interviews with stakeholder groups, website outreach, and a statistically valid survey, a telephone survey that I'll address the highlights of in a few minutes. The Harris Design Team that is our consultant for this is moving along on schedule, of which we're very happy about. They've conducted an inventory and analysis of all the parks and recreational facilities. And now would be a good time to note, this is not a master plan for programming, it's for facilities. Certainly tangentially, we get program information, but it's really aimed at a master plan for facilities. In addition to the inventory and analysis, they've benchmarked with comparable cities. They've held interviews with city staff and individual council members, they've done a demographic analysis of our city, and they've looked at and analyzed Parks and Recreation trends and how that plays into it. This is being driven through the Parks and Recreation Commission, a way of commission that sits on the steering committee, the first community workshop in September, which is part of the regular Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. And right now, I'd like to put a plug in to everybody in the listening audience, as well as everybody here, Wednesday, December fifth, is the next community workshop, where the beginning draft of an action plan will be provided for public reaction and comment on that. And then they will take that and prepare a final draft action plan that will come to, is scheduled to come to Parks and Recreation Commission in March, and then to this body here for approval later in March or the first meeting in April. That's the current schedule. At that time, you will take all the information provided and all the outreach and all the research that has been done, and ultimately, after any modifications you desire, approve a Parks Master Plan. The exciting part about that is that that plan then will help guide our capital improvement budget, it'll help guide our grant writing efforts, it'll help guide our maintenance efforts, it'll help guide our fundraising efforts through the foundation, so it'll play a large role. It'll be one of those documents that never has a chance to gather dust, it'll just become dog-eared and used a lot. Tonight, I wanted to give you an update on the community telephone survey. I've listed all the other things that are going on. This is one piece of the research being done. It is the statistically valid one. I should note that this is a community survey and not a voter survey. We needed to find out what the community wanted in Parks and Recreation, wanted to find out who used the parks, what they're most interested in, and then we did ask questions about what they were willing to support and even including taxes. The survey was completed with four hundred people, reflective of the demographics of San Carlos, so they had to make over a thousand phone calls. They did, they talked to the head of each household with the idea that the head of the household could speak for the children as well as others in the household. They did random digit dialing, so they make sure they hit all the census tracts, and they randomly changed the order of the questions, so there's no built-in bias, because if you always ask the same question first, maybe that score is higher. So they randomly rotated the order of the questions. Each survey lasted thirteen minutes. And an interesting thing to note, they had difficulty reaching head of households in the age category of eighteen to thirty-four. So they weighted the data to accurately reflect the San Carlos demographic, so that a certain gender, a certain age group didn't get an inordinate amount of preference based on how many interviews they were able to do. Now, certainly, they did interviews there, but they statistically weighted it. So what I'd like to do, there are about fifty of these slides, and I'm not going to give you all fifty, I'm going to give you a few highlights. I can give the council, if you choose, a copy of the complete document, which is this thick, and I have a separate document about this size of some cross-tabulation. And I'll be glad to give you that if you'd like. The thing that seems to be most helpful, having done this for staff and for the Parks and Recreation Commission, is the page and a half executive summary findings that you have in your report, and then the graphic charts, and I'm going to highlight those This is the characteristics of the respondents, and these are reflective of the demographics of San Carlos, plus or minus four percent. So, we've got forty-seven percent males and fifty-three percent females that answered the surveys as head of households. What that means, within plus or minus four percent, that's the demographic here in San Carlos. Thirteen to fifty-four is fifty percent of the population. Then it breaks it down into, do you have pre-teen and teenage children in the household, pre-teen children only, teenage children only, no children? Forty-nine percent of the people have no children in the household. Let me flip my handy-dandy page here. Also talks about their voting. So, the brown is the total sample, male, female, and the purple, ages in the green, this one's fifty-five and older, and then what the household is made up of, then their income. Fourteen percent of the people in town have a household income of under sixty thousand and forty-five percent have a household income of a hundred and twenty thousand or more. The gray lines are voters. Sixty-two percent of the people responding say they report themselves as a good voter. The definition of good voter is they say that they vote in every municipal election. Knowing what the turnout was at the last election, we actually asked that question. And his comment was, they actually have a term for this, something about social pressure or social desirability. So, he said he would cut it in half if maybe, you know, thirty-one percent of the people. But again, to be really legitimate, we can only report what was reported. So sixty-two percent reported themselves as good voters, thirty-eight percent say they vote some of the time. And then this bottom army green color is how often they visit the parks. And this is one of my first surprises. Forty-eight percent of the people say they visit the parks four times a month or more. Only thirteen percent say they have not visited a park within the last six months. What's surprising about that is, national studies will tell you that at any one time, only twelve to fifteen percent of households in your community are using Parks and Recreation Services. You know, they may have used them before, use them in the future, but at any one time. This seems to say that people really use our Parks and Recreation System, much more than the national average. Then, broken down into the frequency of how often they visit the facilities, this is the forty-eight percent that visits four times a month or more, thirteen percent that say never, fewer than once a month, about once a month, and two or three times a month. So people do use our system. Then, and you're going to see a couple different styles of reports here, and for all of this information, you can go into the different types of reports to get, you know, find out information that you want. This one here is by their background category, how often do they visit? And the average is three visits a month, that's this dotted line here. So again, the colors will stay through, this is brown, this is the total, okay? And the average for everybody was three visits a month. Beyond the average, up to four point two a month, if you have pre-teen children only in the household, you use the parks more than any other group. If you have children, these here, you use the parks more than average, if you have no children, you use it less than average. Income, the higher the income, the more you tend to use it, didn't seem to make much difference in the voters. And people fifty-five and older didn't use it very much, or use it as much, two point one. I'm happy to report that when people said that they don't use the, the thirteen percent that said they don't use it, it wasn't, the answers, when you look at the verbatim answers, and we have that, too, didn't speak to anything that was particularly wrong with the park yours, either they were, had trouble getting to a park, their lifestyle, they didn't, had no interest, whatever. One of the negative things we heard was that the parks seemed too crowded, which is a good problem to have, and we'll take that, but we'll also address that. So, this is by different demographics, how often they visit a park. And again, here's the primary reason for not having you visited a park, the biggest one, twenty-nine percent, no need or desire to visit parks, too busy, don't have children, age is a barrier, other things to do, disabled, parks seem crowded, five percent, don't engage in outdoor activities, lack of public transportation, other, and then don't know or no answer. So, we were happy to see that, but we're certainly not going to rest on our laurels on that one. Then, they asked, so that was some of the demographics. One of the things that I really wanted to know going into this is, who doesn't use us? And why don't they use us? If they, if there was a reason why they didn't use this that we could provide, I wanted to know that. And so, the demographics and how often they visit and why they don't, they visit, that's what's been covered so far. This was very important to us. Then they asked an open-ended question. What should a good community park system have? Again, it was open-ended. And there's a whole bunch of items here. The biggest one of nineteen percent is good maintenance and cleanliness. And you'll find that as you go through these and, you know, aggregate them, aesthetics was the biggest reason, or biggest thing people thought should have in a good park system. Twenty-seven percent cited factors such as maintenance and cleanliness, attractive landscaping, garbage cans, clean bathrooms, et cetera. This first one here, of good maintenance and cleanliness, comes as no surprise to Parks and Recreation staff. We know that one of the main things people want is they want clean bathrooms and they want clean facilities. And programs really come after that. So aesthetics were twenty-seven percent, children were twenty-one percent. That would include, you know, if they listed, well, we should have play equipment, areas for small children, a youth center, et cetera. So, twenty-one percent children. Seventeen percent said playing fields. And that's when you aggregate, if they said a baseball field, a soccer field, artificial turf, you know, athletic field. And then the other one was aquatics, fourteen percent cited pool-related features, a pool, a water feature, et cetera. And again, there's all kinds of breakout down here. But again, aesthetics was the main thing that people saw that they said makes a good system, followed by things for children, followed by playing fields, followed by aquatics. Then they asked, what is the most desirable improvement or addition to our current system? And pool got seventeen percent. And again, if you do some aggregation, you've got pool here and then went to seven percent, play area for small children, improved landscaping, dog park, better maintenance, trails, water features, artificial turf, athletic fields, community center, soccer fields, and all the way down to golf, at less than a half a percent, basketball courts. And again, this is the most desirable improvement or addition. And again, if you aggregate some things, if you take pool plus water features, you end up with twenty-one percent. If you take artificial turf, athletic fields, soccer fields, baseball fields, you end up with seventeen percent. But again, the survey, to maintain the integrity of the survey, can only report the answers. So that's, that was again, an open-ended question, the most desirable additional improvement. Then, now it starts, to me, it gets really interesting. They then said to the people, okay, Parks and Recreation, the city is hearing, there were specific improvements that the community wants. And everything from a performing arts center to a dog park, to more fields, trails, a pool, et cetera, all those twelve were listed. This one here, once they were asked, what they did is they went through all twelve of them and said, would you be very interested, moderately interested, not very, or not at all interested in this improvement? Trails came out number one. Number two was an outdoor pool, number three was an indoor pool, number four was a performing arts center. Now, the color breakdown here, again, the brown is the total, and there's your average of three, this dotted line. These are the three here that had well above average interest. These here, build and maintain additional athletic field space, a new community center, available, make available more gym space for adults, new sports complex with nightlighting, and a dog- These here, build and maintain additional athletic field space, a new community center, available, make available more gym space for adults, new sports complex with nightlighting, and a dog park with a fenced-in area that includes water. Those achieved average, average recommendations or desirability. And you can see that these first couple are a little bit over the average. That would be athletic field space and a community center. And then this one here, sports complex without nightlighting, didn't score well, and then the skateboard park and more tennis courts did not score well at all. So whereas before they had the open-ended question, now we list the twelve and say, how interested are you in this? Then they drill down a little bit farther and asked, for those twelve things, what would you be willing to pay additional taxes for? Now, it should be noted, as I noted up front, this was a community survey and not a voter survey. So they didn't say how much a particular feature would cost, how much the tax would be, the general question of, do you think you would support it? And again, trails came out number one. And it really stayed in the same order as the previous one. Trails followed by the outdoor pool, the indoor pool, and the performing arts center. And then again, followed by more athletic field space, community center, sports complex with lighting, and then you see how it starts to tail off, dog park, gym for adults, skate park, sports complex without lighting, and more tennis courts. So that was interesting information there. Then I want to just break down a little bit for you, to give you some of the idea of the information that is here. And pardon me while I stay organized here. Okay, this is, I wasn't as organized as I thought, I'm sorry. Give me one more second here. There we go. I'm just basking in the high score for trails. Go right ahead, Barry.
How many times did you vote, Mr. Mayor, in this survey?
You have a lot of friends out there. Okay, this is the reaction to my category to, those who'd be willing to pay additional taxes to improve the trails. I do have some thoughts based on, nothing scientific, on why people are so interested in trails, but...
Yeah, two or three ideas as well, but go ahead.
Again, this is the total of everybody. It looks here like ages eighteen to thirty-four were most in favor of paying additional taxes for trails. Fifty-five and older, a little bit less. The less you visit the parks, the less you would be. And of course, this will hold true throughout. The less you use the parks, the less inclined you are to have additional taxes. And the rest of it, you know, pretty, pretty average, pretty close to the line. Then they did the same thing for an outdoor pool, the taxes. Now it changes a little bit. Here it's pretty, pretty obvious, this one here for the hiking trails, seventy-six, seventy-six percent. Then, how many, who'd be willing to pay for additional taxes for the outdoor pool? Again, ages eighteen to thirty-four and thirteen to fifty-four clearly favored more than people fifty-five and older did for the pool. You notice that the females had an edge here, fifty-five, fifty-eight over fifty-four percent. Let me get that tab here. And then if you have preteen children and teenage children or preteen children only, you're up in the sixties. Lower income, this was interesting, lower income seem to be willing to pay additional taxes for pool. And then those sixty to one hundred and twenty thousand a year, and again, those are household incomes. And then the higher income, not as high. The good voters, all others, good voters weren't as inclined, but again, I think they report that a statistical, a significant difference is seven percent. And then how often they visit the parks, do they visit four times a month or more, they're more inclined to support the pool. And that's for the outdoor pool. There's the indoor pool, and again, you can see the breakouts, again, the younger people have children in the household, lower income, all other voters. And then how often they visit the parks, other than those who don't visit, tended to be right on the average. Performing arts center, and again, you see some consistency here. Eighteen to thirty-four, preteen children in the house. These are the income levels, this is the lowest income here, under sixty thousand voters, and then how often they visit the parks. And the same thing for athletic field space, you see some differences here. Eighteen to thirty-four, only thirty-five percent said they'd favor additional field space. Thirty-five to fifty-four jumps up to forty-seven percent. Reflective of the children, if you have preteen and teenage children, preteen only, teenage only, you know, you still were above the average. No children, you're below. And then income didn't seem to be significantly different, and if you visit the parks a lot. Then this is looking at the good voters. Again, those who report, self-report that they vote in every municipal election. I want to pull out my page here. Okay, good voter support, fifty-five percent, fifty-two percent, fifty-five percent said trails, fifty-two percent outdoor pool, indoor pool, performing arts center, fields. We go down in the same order as we've seen. And those who said which improvement they'd like, how willing you'd be, how willing are you to pay extra taxes for one of these twelve? And now you go farther, it's just the good voters, and it's, you know, pretty reflective of that. Then this is another way of looking at it, and this is an interesting one. I know I sound like a schoolteacher, all these graphs sound interesting. And I used to be a teacher. So those are the good voters. But same thing, because when you look at this information, you know, fifty-five percent are favorite trail, fifty-two percent outdoor pool for additional taxes, it's also important to look at how many people were against it. So trails, you've got fifty-five, four, and twenty-two against it. That's, that's pretty significant. You get down in here, this one's a new community center, you know, you've got thirty-eight percent for and forty-one percent against. Even if you're at fifty-fifty, you begin to ask questions if you could, you know, pass a tax measure. So this kind of information is available for each of the different breakouts, too. Then finally, they asked about the likelihood of donating to support one or more improvements. And what you've got here is, very likely was twenty-seven percent, moderately, thirty-seven percent, not very, thirty-five, and don't know a half a percent. And that, we wanted to ask that question because we do a lot with donations. And this is a little surprising to us. I would have liked to have seen it higher. And then again, this is a social desirability answer in many ways. So the consultant, again, with no statistical information on which to base it, but on his experience, he said, probably cut that in half, of those who would actually, you know, make a donation. And then likelihood of donating by background, again, by the demographic. Ages thirteen to fifty-four, if you've got children in the household, higher income, good voters, which could translate to, you know, be involved in the community, and if they visit the parks more often. Those demographics tended to be more willing to make a donation. So those are some of the highlights. I could have done each, drilled down for each one, but I wanted to give you some highlights.
Very well, thank you. Any questions for Barry?
So, pardon me, this perplexing amount of information up there. It's kind of tough to get a bead on it. You know, when you look at it from unprompted, by my count, nobody mentioned trails. And then prompted, it marched to the top. So it's curious, right, that in conversation, nobody's actually mentioned it, but then when prompted, it's well supported. And then the seventy-six percent that was the highest category, supporting trails, was the hardest category to survey, right?
It was, that would...
The idea of number of respondents that were eighteen to, by the way, they were also the lowest demographic that were likely to donate money, at fifteen percent. But I'm just curious, do you know how many people, I realize you said there was, they had to factor that up, those votes up, in order to make it statistically accurate?
I do. Unweighted respondent counts. Of the four hundred, eighteen to thirty-four, forty-five responded.
So forty-four, forty-five out of four hundred.
They got forty-five from the survey, out of four hundred.
And our demographic is thirty-nine years old roughly?
The demographic...
You say, Carlos, roughly thirty-nine?
Maybe a percentage is here. We have nineteen percent of the community is ages eighteen to thirty-four.
Okay, I just, I remember our overall demographic, I thought our average age was thirty-eight or something like that.
Well, that can be an average, yeah.
And then the other thing is, no children, nobody under eighteen was asked what they preferred.
Correct. Except we did a focus group of the Youth Advisory Council, other than that, I'm not aware of any children that were asked.
Because, I mean, to a certain sense, like, I wonder if the parents want to go take their kids on hikes and the kids don't want to go. It's funny, you know, I go to Eaton Park probably in a, pretty often, right? And, boy, I've really seen more than five or six people on that trail at any one point in time. So it's just, it's a, really, it's, it's great to know there's support for the trail system out there, even though it doesn't seem to be, do you have statistics on how many people use those parks on average? Our existing trails of Eaton and Big Canyon and Arguello?
We don't. We have no way of capturing that data at this point.
Okay. So I guess I also would like to see us, to the extent that we can, try to also survey people under eighteen, just because they're, what percentage of our facilities and parks are used by people under eighteen in programs?
If you count programming and community groups that use our facilities, probably sixty percent is youth serving.
Right.
Could be a little higher.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
I had one question. It looked like when, if I understood this correctly, when unprompted by a list, a pool, simply a pool, without defining indoor or outdoor, was the top, top thing that people said, yeah, you know, we, this is what a park system should have. And then it seemed to me when it was broke down in a list, it was, it was divided into outdoor pool, outdoor pool and indoor pool, and it seems to have dropped the whole idea of a pool down below trail systems. Am I reading that correctly? In other words, to me, it looks like the pool, the idea of a pool, if you combine indoor and outdoor, still stays at the top, just like it did in the unprompted response.
Yeah, and let me find that here. Okay. Interested and, and willing to pay taxes about the same. So what you've got here is, outdoor pool is two point nine one out of four, trails are three point one two, and indoor was two point eight three. You couldn't combine those two, but I, I think it would be safe to assume that if you didn't ask, if you didn't separate between the two, and just said pool, you might, you'd have some kind of combination, probably not a complete, you know, multiple plan. But again, I'm not an expert in that, I'm surmising, too.
Okay, okay. And should we take any, and I am, but I'm wondering if we should. I'm taking a little bit of interest in if we get down the road where we're thinking of going for some kind of tax measure to pay for some of this. You mentioned that eighteen to thirty-four, you know, voted the highest in favor of, yeah, we'd be willing to pay taxes for this. But I look at that, just like lower income, or similar to lower income, which you also said was more willing to pay, but don't we have to also look at ability to pay? Because I would think in some regards, you know, the eighteen to thirty-four, especially you get, the closer you get to eighteen, your ability to actually pay, or whether it would impact you at all, you know, at eighteen years old, if you're living in San Carlos, you're either living with your parents, or you might rent, be renting something, you probably don't own a house. And so, you know, something like this showing up on your, your tax bill as a added measure to your tax bill isn't going to happen.
The experts in this, our consultants, as well as other experts, will tell you that the phone survey, while being the only statistically valid document that we have or tool, is still a piece. We combine it with the community workshops, the online web, all the other public input we gathered, the stakeholder meetings, the individual interviews, and out of that, you get a composite picture. So, you know, they may or may not come to you and say, we recommend that, you know, that's your first, second, third priority in that order. They'd have to put everything else into it. And quite honestly, I don't know what the actual recommended action plan is going to be, because we haven't seen it yet. But everything else has to be taken into consideration also. But this does give you a statistically valid tool.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just, Mr. Weiss just said sort of what I would say. I think it's a, it's a tool, it's, it's part of the, part of the bigger scheme, as you mentioned, and I think in that sense, I can accept it. It's just, it's real hard for me, as I said at our last meeting, when I voted against spending some money for another survey, for some, it's just so hard when you get forty-five people of, it's just real difficult for me to, to, to go with, with, with some of these numbers. And having used numbers all my life, I mean, I can make them dance on the top of a pin, it's just real difficult. But I think your point is well taken about using this as part of the whole concept. It just can't be the end-all and be-all, it's got to be used along with other types of things. And I think it can be possibly affected in that way, but, but it's, it's, it's amazing to me that in two years, I have never had anybody call me or write me or email me saying, we need more trails. I'm not saying we don't, but I just, I'm, I'm just stunned by that, that that came out on top, and I'm sure some other people probably are, too. And, and maybe there's just a whole bunch of folks that are just quiet, and they responded in this way, and maybe that's what we need to pay attention to again, and part of the whole, whole development of, of our master plan. And I'm glad we're doing it, because it's going to give us all these different parts.
And that's the way it is with trail users, just a quiet bunch of people who are just, just enjoying what they enjoy. I won't, I won't argue the results, I'm very pleased to see where trails came up on the numbers, but I, I think, you know, I think it does, it does say something about where we are. About our open space policy, about Big Canyon, about Eaton Park, about, about Devonshire, about the connectivity of these, we have a trail committee that's been working on this, the council's adopted a trail connectivity plan. I think it's all part of the big picture, maybe not everyone likes them, but everyone sort of appreciates the fact they're there and that they're available, and we've done something to, to preserve them. And that, I think, perhaps has something to do with the results. Not only in our own city, but progress ridge and Edward and, and Baltimore, and, and like, you know, you can go forever, but this is a wonderful, a wonderful reason to live in the community and a wonderful part of our outdoor policy. I, I think, and I'm encouraged by the fact that you asked the question about what you'd be willing to pay, and people are presumably asked in terms of what they would be willing to support. And I do think that as we come down to the final strokes on this plan, we'll have an opportunity to, to do that a little more precisely, because I don't think these things are going to happen without community involvement and the community participation through some sort of pay structure. So it's good to see, and, and it gives me hope that we're going to be able to do something with this report and, and take care of our recreational and park needs for many, many years to come. Now, I saw a couple folks in the alleys who'd like to, to speak. Young lady in the fifth row, would you like to tell us what's on your mind? You need to come up here where they can hear you. Your friends are back there cheering you on, so...
I'm Hannah Skrdina, I live in San Carlos. And I was just wondering where the trails would go, or where fields with lights would go. would go, or where fields with lights would go, because I know that's been proposed before, and I just, we have no space, so...
Barry, you want to respond to that?
We'll be glad to.
I just gave her my business card, and if she'll get ahold of me, we'll give her a map where the trails are. We have trails in three parks: Eaton Park, on the south end of town, Big Canyon Park, off of Britton Avenue, and then Arguello Park, on the north part of town. And those are the three main parks with the trails. And as Mayor Davis mentioned, we do have a group together working on trails connection, so that we can connect those trails with trails of adjacent agencies, so people can keep walking. Ma'am, did that answer your question, where are the trails?
Oh, what was it?
What in the correlation of Burton Park?
Or not just the Burton Park, just the parks that they had, but to add more.
Okay, bring it back to Barry. Okay, yeah. What we're going to do is, as far as trails, like in the wilderness, and trees and stuff, the three parks I mentioned fit that. As far as connecting, we're not going to, you know, knock down houses and plant trees and build a trail, but we are going to create connections. And we actually have talked about that, part of our strategy, too. So that if you live on the east side, say you live at, you know, the house at Holly and Industrial, you can walk in a safe way onto the west side to Burton Park, maybe up Melundy or something, and get into the trail system. I know there's a couple I ran into on the trail in Big Canyon Park. They come off Crestview, enter Big Canyon Park, the Sarah Club and Law and Chairs, and I should mention the Sarah Club on the trails, do a great job for us. Walk toward Heather School, then get close to that now, and then we just get some connections for them, and then cross other parts of town, too. So some of it would actually be on the street with safe connections, others would be the stereotypical trails with trees. And I'll be glad, she has my car, I'll be glad to give you any information.
Very well, thank you. Pat, Matt?
I didn't hear any mention of the park I've been talking about for two years, so I decided I'd mention it again, which is the park that does not include a ball field or anything else noisy, a quiet, contemplative space with nature. And I didn't hear them even ask about that. Is that included in any of those categories they asked about? Good.
I think, you know, I think we do have those spaces, they're not in a park form so much as an open space form. But what you do with the open space, you certainly have a lot of quiet area for contemplation. Having something perhaps a little more organized and a little more accessible might be helpful as well, something we can keep in mind. The City Hall Park, yeah, the City Hall Park, Vista Park, yeah.
In the slide where it talks about what a good system should have, they don't use Pat's phraseology of quite contemplative space, sorry about if I butchered that word. But they talk about open space, attractive landscaping. Most of it is active features, not all of it, water fountains, lots of parks, common, oh, that's for events. So, it would be in the open-ended question, and I can look through the verbatim response, too.
But if it's an open space, and you have to hike to it, it's not accessible?
I understand what you're saying.
So, I'm talking about a little old lady park, or a park...
As my colleagues mentioned up here, Vista Park would be a one qualifier for nice quiet ones.
Or a park for people who use wheeled vehicles for, you know, wheelchairs or scooters or whatever.
Right. So keep in mind Vista Park, City Hall Park, and some of those areas that are, are more in keeping with your suggestion. All right, any other questions for Barry, or comments from the council? Barry, anything else to add?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a comment regarding trails. The, I know, over the weekend, I went out to the, to Water Dog Lake, Lake in Belmont, and went for a run. And I noticed when I was there, they've added some, some trails with Barry, I forget Barry's last name, he's with the mountain bike group. And they went in there and they added some trails to get circuitry going, so you can go start someplace, go around, and come back to where you started without having, doing, doing an out and back. But my point is that when I was out there, I saw quite a few people hiking and jogging and so forth. And I think part of it is because that particular system does have that, and you can get some good distance with it. I think with our parks, that's one of the things that's pretty limiting. And so, as much as we can work on, I know what Mr. Rubens and Mr. Davids have been working on, this connectivity scheme to, to connect us to Edgewood, to connect us to some of the parks in Belmont and so forth. I think it would add to the usefulness of our park system and our trail system to, to have that. And I know that's being looked at, and so encourage that along.
Great. Barry, anything else?
No, thank you for your time and your minutes.
All right, and thank you, and for all the work. I look forward to meeting, you say, on the fifth, right?
Yes, thank you very much for the plug. Wednesday, December 5th, at the library from seven to eight-thirty PM.
Will this be a focus meeting on a certain part of this, or...
They will bring us the initial draft of an action plan, starting to pull some of this together, and the public can react to it and comment on it. And it'll be part of the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, so Wednesday, the fifth of December.
Would you like the other meetings after the first of the year, leading to some sort of council involvement, the spring of the year or so?
March 5th will be the next commission meeting, and then the council after that for approval.
Very good.
And then, community can always give us, you know, online comments, emails, call me, whatever.
All right, thank you very much. And we have consensus on the part of the council, do you see the report? Encourage Barry to move on. And keep hiking, folks, keep hiking. Well, okay, moving right along to the last item on the agenda, which is 8A. This is a consideration of authorization of the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department purchase of a second new fire engine. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as you will recall, the city council previously authorized the purchase of a fire truck. The JPA with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department requires major purchases of over a hundred thousand dollars receive the authorization of the member agencies. And so, the fire department came to us for authorization for the purchase of a fire truck that was actually in the list of, of vehicle replacement items. Grant monies were going to cover the primary purchase price for that fire engine. Subsequent to that approval, the fire department received a proposal from the company that was building that fire engine to provide us with a second fire engine that would allow us to catch up with the vehicle apparatus that is available to the department for discounted price. And so, the fire chief took to the fire board the proposal that we consider the purchase of that second engine. And the fire board has brought it to us, each of the member agencies, for authorization to move forward with that purchase. The fire chief is in the audience tonight and is available to answer any questions, should the council might have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mark, or the chief?
So, I had a couple of questions. One was, so, I mean, this is like a three percent discount. Is this something that we were scheduled to replace on this given schedule?
I don't believe it would be something that we were scheduled to replace currently, but it is in the vehicle replacement schedule. And it is an engine that we would have replaced in any event. There is a small discount for purchasing it at this time. The funds are available in the vehicle replacement budget because of the fact that we were able to, or the fire department was able to receive grant monies to pay for the first engine. And so, this would allow us to catch up, if you will, in terms of our vehicle replacement schedule. But I believe that the department has, and I think correctly so, proactively put a vehicle replacement schedule in place in the last couple of years. And so, we now have a schedule, this allows us to, to get current with that schedule.
And is there any reason that we could expect more grant funding for a second engine, just like we have on the first engine?
I asked that question to the chief, and I'll defer that question to him.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the chances of us getting another grant for an engine is probably few and far between. For local government of our size to get what we got is a big increase for us. Most agencies that get the grants for engine companies are volunteer or small, small agencies that just don't have the funding available. And because of the, our past history of where we were, we were fortunate enough to receive the grant, but chances are, we will not get another one. The, in response to the first part of the question, we actually deferred replacement of an engine in 2002. And because of all the issues that were going on with the department, the one that we would have replaced, this year would have replaced the O2 unit, and then we were due again this year to do another unit that was based on the schedule. Our current schedule, twelve years frontline, six years reserve, and then we surplus them out, and they're gone. And so, we're right at that point.
And then, are we also, if we authorize this, are we committed to this? In other words, twelve months from now, if we could have gotten a better deal from somewhere else, we're locked into this, if we do this now?
That's correct. And chances of us getting a better deal probably would not happen. There's going to be cost increases. Motors are increasing in cost to meet the new O7, O8 emission standards, so we're really getting in on a good, a good timing. There is probably a five to eight percent, percent increase coming up in January from all manufacturers across the board.
Now, are we able to sell our engines that were taken out of the fleet, and do we raise money from those, and do those go against these costs?
We're limited on the first one. Because of the grant receipt for the first unit, we are required to not sell that vehicle to another agency that can use it as a code three or operational unit for emergency response. What we need to do with the first unit is work out something with community college programs, CSM, Chabot, any of those that are interested in getting fire equipment for their programs, that it won't be, for lack of a better term, put on the street and driven around. It'll be confined to that specific location. We need to do that specifically with the first unit, that's a commitment that's tied to the grant. The, we can on the second unit, and we actually are discussing with some firms in the East Bay that are willing to pay us for the second unit at a, you know, a percentage rate of what the street value of it would be on a twenty-year-old piece of apparatus.
Well, we got six-hundred-and-fifty bucks for the fire engine in Burton Park on eBay.
They can get more, like about twenty-five thousand.
You sound a little more optimistic about that if you would, yep.
Yeah. I will go online for that one. I think we'll negotiate something else.
Thank you.
Matt?
I just wanted to add comment to the chief's comments with regards to perhaps getting a better deal down the line. What was reported to us at the fire board is the trip that some of our firefighters made to Seagrave, and with the specifications in hand of what it was we were ordering. And what they do with these, with these engines is they build them, basically, raw metal comes into this factory at one end, and a fire engine comes out at the other. And all the specifications are written to what it is that we need specifically. And we, the chief had these guys go through, look at all the possible bells and whistles, and eliminated actually a lot of the bells and whistles that we've had in the past, because, you know, just like with your automobile, if you get the special features, especially if they're electronic, they tend to be the things that break down and bring the life of that apparatus to a close more quickly. So they went with more simplified devices and specifications to keep this thing in service for a longer time, and are just getting the things that they find are most useful, and they get the most life out of.
We also did, too, on this, on both of these units, do a joint purchase with another department. So we were getting a discount already by joining in with other agencies that were purchasing the same unit. So from a manufacturing point of view, it's very easy for them to add a couple more in the assembly line, and because they're ordering the same parts, the same transmissions, the same motor, all those things are coming through. It allows us to get a little bit of a better price break on that, instead of just going buying our own one time, six months from now, again, you know.
And you also, in the report, one of the rigs is sealed down in San Diego County, is that right?
We did have an engine that went to San Diego. They were there for the ten days. They were released to come home, and the transmission started to go out in it. And they actually left the engine in San Diego, and I had them rent a car and drive back with the strike team. And then, the San Diego fire shops did the repair for us, charged the incident. And then I flew two people back down, and they drove it back a week or so later. So that is one of the concerns, is, you know, we sent a thirteen-year-old unit down there, should be in reserve, and, and we should be getting, getting caught up on these things.
Great, thank you.
Matt?
Yep. We're reporting to the fire board, and I think it's, we're getting a discount, we're getting, we're on track to have a vehicle replacement fund, which we set up.
Correct.
None of these funds will come in until the next fiscal year, because we won't be paying for it.
Correct.
Until the next fiscal year. So I think it's just, it's just good business to, to have these units available and stuff, so.
And what we will be doing, as Councilmember Lucili has mentioned, lease purchase on this. We have the funding that will be available in the next several years through the vehicle replacement program, and we'll be ready to go with that.
Okay. Am I happy? Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the new fire apparatus.
Second.
No call, please.
Councilmember Lucili?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Your data's...
Yes.
And that brings us to the end of our meeting this evening. I'd like to thank all those who participated, the audience, and those who have already left us, especially Barry, carrying the heavy load today on a lot of reporting. And this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.